Looks like he's in Europe. There you go.
That was actually in England.
England.
Right, same place. It was in the Cotswolds.
Nice.
Yeah, it was a wonderful trip.
Good morning, team.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, everybody.
Morning, Jesse.
I just got an email from Jim. He'll be on in a moment. His Zoom has to update itself.
Excuse me, how do I show my view if needed?
Are you, you're trying to show your, your video, ma'am?
Yes. Is there something on my, a setting on my?
Are you calling in on your phone or are you on a computer? There you go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Tom, while we're waiting, Jim had asked me to send him a copy of Elliot's plan that we'll go through in a few minutes and I, I neglected to copy you on that. So I just sent it to you.
Okay. Yep, just came in.
Dana, it sounds like you got some little guys running around in the background there.
Oh, good. I'm actually just out of town for a couple of days. I'm up in, you ever go to Wentworth by the Sea?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I can mute it.
Oh, no, no worries. No worries.
I'm surprised you can hear that.
Everybody on here is so quiet. I think it's picking up the slightest bit of sound.
So this be our last meeting, Jesse, before next one's the actual ZB A meeting.
Uh, that's, I think that's up to, to Tom and Jim, but I, unless we can squeeze another one in, in the next couple of days, I would probably.
Yeah.
I think that was the plan.
Okay. Looks like we might get a little rain today, depending on where everybody's calling in from. I know about all of you, but my garden is suffering this summer.
It's been the worst. I'm losing luck. I have an ornamental. What's that called? Magnolia in the front. It's been there for like 20 years and it's dying.
Oh, wow.
I've been trickle watering it for days. Yeah, it's really pretty bad.
Making Elliot's job hard.
Yeah.
Water bill's high, keeping them high.
I think I'm gonna kick it off. And Jim has just called me, so he's hoping he's gonna be able to hop on any minute. He's just waiting for his update to, to download. So all order the subcommittee meeting of the Board of Appeals. It's August 11th at 11 o'clock. It relates to the project on North Ave. I'm gonna read an opening for the meeting. Consistent with the governor's orders, extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number, 1301-715-8592. Meeting ID 85728275002, passcode 719588. Please use dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, this location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the town's disability coordinator, William Renaud, Town Engineer, at 781-246-6308, as far in advance of the event as possible. Every event will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you. Okay. With that, you guys, Jesse, you want to start? We'll catch Jim up.
Sure. Thanks, Tom. Where, where would you like to start? Would you want to go to architecture first or landscape?
Let's go landscape because let's, Jim being the architect, let's, let's save that for him. Let's make sure he's there.
Okay, sounds good. Elliot, do you want to go through what you prepared this morning?
Yeah, I have to have the screen, host disabled, participant screen sharing.
Okay, this might be a problem because Jim's the host. Let me see if I can work my way through that. I don't know if I have the power.
I think if you run your mouse over the lower part of the screen, you can see a share screen button.
Uh, yeah, but I can't even share my screen. Jim's the host.
If you go over to participants, you can actually claim host, it seems like, bottom right. So Elliot, you may be able to just claim it. It's the bottom right corner. Once you hit participants.
And then I hit me?
Yeah.
Yeah. That way you'll be able to share your screen.
Let's see what these are. Edit profile, rename, pin. All right, let me, let me see if I can do it. Claim host. I got it. All right. I don't have the, the host key.
Okay.
Oh.
Six digit number.
Let me see if it's on the agenda. Hold on.
It says the host key is a six to 10 digit number.
No, it's not. And I bet only Jim has it because I bet it's the town. So they don't, they're probably pretty tight with security with that.
No.
Okay.
Otherwise, anybody logging in could just claim it.
Right. And hijack the meeting.
Tom, can Jim come in on his phone or he has to go on the computer?
He just texted me now. Okay. Elliot, for the code, put in 462501. 462501.
01, yep. Yep, so it's up in the corner. You're the host now.
Okay. That's up, right?
Yep.
Okay. Now, so the changes were just done very recently. We have, we had a meeting with, with Phoenix and with William Sparages last week. And, and so this represents the new footprint of the building. It also represents a new stormwater retention area over in the parking area. So let's start with the front of the building. We, we still have the street trees along the, along North Ave. They're gonna be similar to what we have at the building next door. So those are gonna be red maples. And I'm sure that Bill Renaut will approve those as a street tree. We, we still have the arch walkway coming up from the sidewalk to the front entrance of the building. Vaded the the wing walls and the retaining walls along the front. We still have to determine whether or not this, this area between the sidewalk and art walkway is, is going to become detention area or retention area for, or rain garden or what have you. But it appears that that's a lower area in order to facilitate the drainage. And Chris can talk more about that. Shedding away from the building. But in either case, we kept that the same. Because the front elevation has been modified, we took away some of the trees, two of the trees that were flanking the entrance and the entrance has become somewhat larger. So we're emphasizing the, the entrance to the building and softening the two corners with some fastigued trees as we've kept all along. Added a couple of amenity areas to the right. This is a bike rack area. It's convenient to the sidewalk and to the parking lot. If you wanted to drop off your bike or pick it up. It makes sense to have it located in the front rather than all the way around the back. So we've designated this area for the, the bike rack amenity. Kept this walkway here and these represent pavers. They may not be pavers at a, at a certain point, but we're thinking that, that it might be nice to have some decorative paving element highlighting the entrance and walkways to the buildings. So we've kept this walkway over. And the handicap ramp has been reoriented here. And we've completed the planting in, in this area. There are new bump outs in the architecture. We've, I was able to keep some planting at the lower corner. Again, some fastigued trees, softening that corner of the building. And then the area in the front next to the bike rack is a larger landscape area now. So we were able to add in some, some trees to screen that, that view. And these may Phoenix did a rendering and I, and some of the stuff happened last night and this morning. So it's, it's been in progress. So a lot of these, some of these changes may not have made it to the rendering. But in order to get the screening done from the neighbors, this, this is a good opportunity to put in some trees over here. Vaded more green space to the right of the parking area. Since the stormwater retention area had, has changed shape, we were able to, to gain some green space for snow storage. The screening at the entrance is, is basically the same as in the last iteration, as, as are these screening trees between the K O C and our site. Around the back, we've also kept it basically the same. We still have the art planting bed up against the, the building for shade trees and added two seating areas underneath the shade trees for either waiting or drop off or what have you. Moving around to the left hand side of the building, this was a tight spot. Jim had mentioned that, that, you know, we wanted some connection through here. So to facilitate maintenance, I've created a pathway of stepping stones in a gravel pavement. So it's, it's a contained area. You're not going to get grass necessarily to grow over there. If it becomes a thoroughfare for people walking back and forth to the amenity area, then the grass is going to get trampled and ruined. So I created this, this sort of hardscape path and then put a, a safety fence along the top of the retaining wall at a point. I'm not exactly sure what the elevation is, but I think it drops around three or three feet or so. And then moving over to the front corner, this is a grill, two grilling stations with the patio area. Small seating wall here. Again, it's, it's a combination of seating wall and, and retaining wall. We do have some grade change dropping down. I think in the order of five or six feet in this sloped area. And so in the lower area, created a, a fire pit. It's about a 14 foot diameter space, hardscape space, permeable pavers, and then some steps accommodating folks to get down to that lower area. I've added a few trees in there to kind of create the, a separate area from the grill station. And also an added layer of buffering from the street. So it, it kind of creates its own private space over here. And that sort of wraps up the new, new changes added, added amenity areas, added snow storage area, bike rack, and then the sort of enhancement of the, of the connection from the sidewalk to the front enter, entrance of the building.
So on the pavers, you're not sure what it is because the board generally wants to see. Even if you don't know this morning, by the time we get to the meeting, members are gonna want to know what that is. They're gonna want to know, obviously, what we're getting with the building.
Okay. I think at this point, they're probably going to be concrete pavers. Presumably by either Unilock or Tego Block. For their price effectiveness and also durability and also the fact that we can get them.
Yeah, okay. I said, I'm not. I think people are just gonna want to know what it is.
Okay.
And I don't know, I don't know if this goes to the architecture, but there was talk about increasing the front walkway, the size of the front walkway. Was that done?
This shows it at five feet. I think the scale is right. Five feet is, is basically a, you know, shoulder to shoulder walking space, comfortable walking space for, for people to come in. We're getting, enlarging it by a foot, pushing it, let's say, pushing it towards North Ave is gonna decrease the green space and sort of minimize the, the stair connection in there. It, we can certainly do it. It's just again, we're, we're adding more hardscape and less green space.
Yeah, it was, it was a comment by more than one person at the last board meeting though. So you, you can do it. And if you don't want to do it, just be prepared to defend it.
Okay.
And, and was it also, excuse me, was it considering the width of the stairs, was that also part of that?
Yeah, in the front. I think they look a little bigger now. From my memory, like up closer to the building. But I'm talking about the walkway between the arch walkway and the sidewalk.
Yeah, one, one of the, the changes was development of the front entry and that became larger. And originally, the, the the walkway was, was pulled to meet it. And now we're pushing towards the street a little bit. So any, any incremental increase in the paving is obviously going to minimize the, or reduce the, the green space in front. So I didn't want it to get too close or to, you know, look a little forced. So that's, I, I think that's why, my thought anyway, was to keep it to five feet.
Elliot, is the stairway the same width as the, the, the circular walkway there? So I have, I have in my notes from the last hearing, Tom, that that was a comment from Chip and he, he wanted something wider, more of an estate type entrance.
Exactly.
He may have been, I, I don't want to speak for him, of course. He may have had in mind the staircase there.
Yeah, that's what I did. I'm sorry. I think you wanted them around eight feet wide, if I remember. Or wider than they were shown.
Jesse, to answer your question, the, the perpendicular walkway to the sidewalk is five feet as well as the, the arched walkway.
Okay. Well, maybe, maybe a way to, to address this and satisfy Chip on this is to widen just the staircase a little bit. Okay. And in that way, not, you know, not take away from the extensive green space around those, those walkways, which are obviously quite a bit larger.
Six to seven feet. Okay.
Now, where are you with approval with EPW on the tree plantings and so forth?
We have not received any correspondence from Bill Renaud. Yet I can, I can follow up with him and ask him, but
Chris, did that come up in your meeting with Bill? Was it yesterday that you met with Bill?
Yes, we met with, I met with Bill yesterday, but we did not talk about street trees. We talked about, you know, several other civil site related things, but not the, not the trees.
Okay, that, I'll put that on our list of homework assignments, Tom. We need to tie that one down.
And in terms of the irrigation, have you figured out what you're doing with that? And are you designing in a way that can support the street trees? Because obviously we want, we're going through all this effort to get them. Then we want, give them the best chance to survive.
Jesse, you want to answer that?
So Elliot, are you, are you irrigating those trees? Or what is the, what is your, what's your proposal on that?
Yes, yeah, the plan is to Yes, yeah, the plan is to irrigate. Absolutely, we can, we have situations like we have now, dial up the irrigation. To make sure the street trees are comfortable. In times of when it's wetter, we can dial that back. So it's, you know, it's really an investment. In in the whole. Appearance of the of the site and the building itself, so I would definitely recommend irrigation that can be. Dialed back or or augmented as necessary, but yes, the street trees, this side of the sidewalk should be irrigated as well on that.
Okay, and so Jesse, you made a note, I think, at the last meeting that you're going to include that because you're going to have to. If that irrigation scratches into the public way.
Yep.
We're just going to have to have the appropriate agreement in place. It's been done other places, so it's not a big deal. Just I don't want to lose that.
Yeah, definitely, Tom, that that is, that's on my radar as well. I think once we get to the point where we we say, okay, this is the plan and start moving towards the decision. At that point, my plan would be to reach out to Tom Mullen to to discuss that and make sure that he's aware of it and and see what his thoughts are for. Appropriate condition to make sure that it's covered and then, you know, talk about it in agreement.
All right. So my notes on that is you got to get together with the D P W, get the trees approved, a note with Tom Mullen, and then. You got to identify the papers you're going to use and be ready for the board meeting. Because Jim's going to want a full material packet.
I'm in right now.
Oh, okay.
Off my phone.
Okay. Jim, I just got your text. Hold on one second. Let me look down here. When I came on, it says recording. Am I supposed to do something else?
No, it's recording. I can see it.
Okay.
You're all set. So what have I missed? Sorry, everybody.
Elliot just walked us through the changes, which are all reactive to what we said. I'd say that. The the notes we made were that they're going to relook at the front walkway between the arch walkway and the sidewalk, possibly expand that. Elliot was a bit concerned that it's eating up greenway, but I know eating up green space and then creating more impervious surface. But I know you and Chip had had made the comment that you'd like to see that a little wider. They owe us some detail on the what pavers they're going to use.
Yeah, materials, basically a materials package.
Yeah, that's what I just said, but as you were coming in here, that they can include that in in the materials pack.
So. Have you covered Peter's stuff?
No, no, we were waiting for you to get on with that.
Okay, all right, good.
Be better for you.
So at at this point. You've only covered the landscape.
Right.
And and it sounds to me like nothing's changed on the landscape yet, or actually I do see.
Yeah, there were some changes at the front. If you're looking at the screen.
Yep.
The corner of the building that's closest to North Ave on the K F C side of the building. Some trees were added there. A bike area was added there. There's some additional green space on the. Next to where the drainage system is right on as it debuts, the K F C lot at the front of the property. That green space will allow them some more snow removal area to snow storage.
And and the civil and the civil drainage has been squared off too now, I guess.
Right.
Okay.
They added amenity area next to the grill area that's a a fire pit. Looks good to me. Looks like a good idea.
Yeah, I see that. Okay.
And then so there's a couple little trees added there to provide some screening for that area.
That's interesting. Yeah, right.
And then along the area where there's that tight squeeze between the retaining wall and the building. They're going to add a fence to the top of that retaining wall as a safety fence. And there's some pavers along there too, so. The concern there being that if it was grass, it'd get dug up by people just walking back and forth, so. I have no problem with that. I think it's all good.
Okay, all right. Sounds good.
Could I ask Jim or or Tom, do you think that the board or do you do you think that it would be? And ask that that we provide a little fence for the amenity area? Do you think that's recommended? Just to kind of get out in front of that.
Elevation change.
Chris, do you have that? Information?
The site, the site plan?
Yeah, the elevation change in the over in the amenity area there.
Yep, so. Right in that area that where Elliot has it up on the screen there, those two, there's a couple of contour lines. That's a that's a two foot. Two foot drop. Let me just zoom in here to see what that number is exactly. Hold on just a second. That is two four. That's a a six foot drop and you can see that there are there are stairs going down from an upper level to a lower level.
And how high is the wall? Because people will probably want to sit on the wall, right?
So that, yeah, so that wall is. Is going to be approximately. It's going to be less than four feet high. At that location, it'll need some kind of a railing, in my opinion.
Yeah.
You know, to bring it up to, you know, between the wall and the railing system, you know, I'd want to see that brought up to a forty two inch high height.
Okay. So Jesse, what was your question relation to this?
It was, it had to do with the. The reason why I'm asking, I was at a hearing last night where we're proposing an amenity space right by the public way. And it came up quite a bit, whether we needed to have a picket fence or something to to keep people from coming off the sidewalk. And just walking onto the into the amenity space from the public realm. And just curious if you if you think that's an important detail we should be adding, or if you're not concerned about that, if the trees are sufficient buffer.
I would like to see the trees being the buffer, but I understand that you may get. People, but you know, the other part of this for a moment. We don't have history as far as sidewalk activity on this side. The cert- most certainly, the sidewalk activity isn't is on the lakeside. So I'm not sure sure to the people that live along here, how much activity is here because you're not. You know, people coming out of the. Auto dealerships are not going to be using this. It's strictly the people in the buildings along here. And ninety percent of the activity or more is on the other side of the street and I can't see, given the traffic. On the street, how many people are actually going to cross the street just to go come over here and be nosy? So I'd rather I'd rather keep it without a fence. You know, if it had to, if a fence had to show up later, then maybe that's something that comes back to the board. And because after occupancy, basically, and say, we really need to do something about this, you know. To keep people that don't belong here out of here, but I'd rather see it done with greenery than anything else.
Okay, good, thanks.
Yeah, I agree with that and I think what Elliot's done there. Kind of accomplishes that.
Yeah, yeah, it does. And 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 it focuses it more to what is the green area basically and where the stream runs through there as well. So Jesse, you're still planning on making a presentation on Wednesday of next?
Yes, I I think we are. It sounds like Elliot needs to make just a couple of revisions here with the the sidewalk. But yeah, our plan is to go forward on Wednesday and so we'll we'll make sure that anything that he he revises is in your hand, in the board's hands by Friday.
Yeah, I I would also suggest that he put together a plant list because guaranteed. Chip is going to ask about the plants, so you might as well get prepared now, put the list together, label the label the items and what the. What the sizes of them are. Otherwise, it's going to put you behind basically because you'll be back at him again. Might as well, I mean, the whole object of this is to make a sort of a final presentation in a way as to what the subcommittee has done. And leave as few holes as possible with the board, so I would suggest very heavily that that be addressed.
In in terms of the tree size, he doesn't want to see anything under three inches planted. And he's big on the granite curbs too, so when you're looking at your site plan, it's going to ask for granite curbing. So all that stuff's coming, so we should be ready for that.
Okay, yeah, that's that's helpful. Elliot, is that doable on your end to put together a plant list before tomorrow and and also a packet of? The paver materials, maybe a representative photo of a grill grill area to show show them what.
Oh, yeah, yes.
And also, you know, fencing details, things like that, if you if you've got something in mind for that.
Yes.
Yeah, what's going to be done around the trash?
Yep.
Trash units too.
Okay, good. So with that, should we should we go to Peter to look at the architecture or are there more issues we should address here on landscape?
No, I I I only had, you know, finishing up the landscape, which I guess we're pretty close to at least at this point. Site amenities I had on my list. You haven't talked much about or have you about civil at this point?
It hasn't come up yet.
All right, why don't we?
One thing, and I know you guys just made changes, so I just want to note, and if it can't happen for Wednesday, you know. I understand, but we'd want to see the changes that you made rendered into the photo so that the renderings and the landscape plan are consistent.
Okay, understood.
And I think we had on our list is a three D. And maybe it's in Peter's stuff, which will come up basically as to how this sets into the neighborhood. Overall, and you've already mentioned basically materials list. Peter generally knows, I mean, it depends on, there's probably, I don't know. There's this meeting with the zoning board and I assume depending on what the zoning board comes up with, basically. It may be one more after that and we should be pretty close to buttoned up, I would think. So there's still more opportunity to present stuff to the. The zoning board. I don't know that there's a need for another meeting of this group. Going forward, particularly after having a meeting with the zoning board who will probably give us further instructions, but. More stuff for your team to take care of basically for another meeting. Peter knows that we're generally looking for some details and some sections basically. Around the around the building, basically, he'd be part of the end package for presentation, so. Those are important things as well. So the more things that we can get closed. With this meeting or at least notify you of what's coming, the better. Whether that, whether you can get it all done for Friday submission or whether it's going to be another Friday submission. In September, basically, is up to how much the guys can get done. So with that, I guess, let's just drop into civil for a moment and then move on to Peter.
Jim, you can reclaim host status. I gave it to Elliot so he could share a screen.
Yeah, I I can't do anything from here.
Okay.
I'm on a little teeny screen.
All right. So Elliot, I guess you have to enable people to allow them to share their screens.
If you can, if you can let me share my screen, Elliot, I'll just give a, I'll give the subcommittee a quick update on civil.
Tom, is that part of the participants' screen? As far as sharing is concerned?
That's a good question. I don't usually, I'm not usually the host of these things.
You can.
I can. I think. Click on you, Chris, if you want to, if you want to plug in that same. Code, then you can be the host and then share your screen.
Okay, let me just see where that is on the screen here.
You should be Elliot. If you click on Chris's name and participants, you can make him a host.
I just, I just did. Clicked on Chris's name.
Okay, so I'm still disabled on my end.
There's a, there's a flyout, there's a, when you, when you hit on his name. There's a little bit of a flyout or more, or it says more or something like that, and after that side, basically, you can select host.
Make host, got it.
Right, you got it.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so you're looking at the grading and drainage plan. This is the plan that we most recently shared with the team after we had up, after we updated the footprint. Not, not a lot has has changed. We met with Bill Renault, the town engineer, yesterday and we we reviewed the revised footprint. And various topics including the the zone A determination, so Bill and I are on the same page as far as. That two hundred foot offset, what we can and can't do within the two hundred. And we also talked about the fact that we have a small section of pavement out. Along North Ave that that slopes in this direction towards North Ave. And then the front of the building that it has the sidewalks and the landscaping here also. Slops out in this direction. Bill said that he'd like us to analyze. The additional flow associated with this section of pavement and the front landscaping. These two existing catch basins and the pipes that lead. In and out of them, just to make sure that that there is capacity. We're talking about relatively small flows here. And then he also asked us to see if we could over mitigate. Over mitigate other parts of our site to make up, if you will, for this slight increase in the front of the building. And and at this location here, so we're we're going to be looking at that in detail. We also talked about the new water main that was recently installed as part of the Mass Works project. It is in the street recently installed, not too far away from the existing eight inch line. And just to give you a heads up on on what he'd like us to do here, the new twelve inch main. Was intended to improve fire flow along the North Ave corridor. And so on new projects that are coming online, Bill would like projects to tie in their fire line. To the new twelve inch line and then their domestic line to the existing eight inch line. So we're going to, we're going to go ahead and update that information. We are also going to be adding a crosswalk. Across the site to connect this side of the street to this existing sidewalk. On the other side of North Avenue and we're looking at roughly this location here, so right at our front entrance. Coming across here to provide access to this intersection here. This will allow folks from five ninety eight from six hundred to come down and and cross at this at this location. We're also looking into providing the rapid flash flashing beacons on either side of the street at this location. See, in addition. And we talked about. Erosion and sediment control monitoring during construction. So that's going to be something that that Bill's looking for monthly inspections for environmental monitoring. He was okay having our office perform those monthly inspections and to provide reports to the. To the D P W, to the engineering department. He just had to be somewhat independent of the contractor. And. Looking at the remaining items here. So so that's that's where we're at. We have some stormwater updates to do. We're going to see if we can make our stormwater management area a little bit bigger to offset. The increases that I just described and then in terms of the traffic advisory committee. We are also design. And then in terms of the traffic advisory committee, we are also designating a a couple of spaces. Let me zoom in a little bit here so I can show you the parking field in front of the back of the building here. The traffic advisory committee asked us to designate a couple of spaces for electric electric vehicles and we're thinking about the two spaces next to this row of handicap parking spaces, so here and here. They've also asked us to identify a couple of visitor parking spaces. So out of the out of all of our spaces, just designating specifically a couple of spaces for visitor parking, we were thinking about these two parking spaces over here for that designation. Finally, when we created a bigger setback from the wetland. It 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 cut into the parking field a little bit, especially down at the end here, so this is a little bit awkward here. We're in the process of of taking a look to see if we can reorient a couple of these parking spaces in in this direction. And trying to see if we can squeeze in a a space that would be painted in the parking area as a sort of temporary sitting area for a delivery vehicle. That was another ask of the traffic advisory committee, if we could if we could pull it off, if we had a spot. So so that's what we're working on and and we're going to be massaging the end of the parking field here to see if we can accommodate that. That's where we stand with a civil site, so we've got a little bit of work to do after our meeting with Bill yesterday.
Okay. Do you think you'll have that worked out before the zoning meeting?
No.
Okay. But we will be able to this, you'll be able to at least discuss what the feedback is at that meeting.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great, alright.
Minor note, Chris, on that visitor parking, like, how's anyone that pulls in supposed to know where to go there? Are you going to have signage out there too?
Uh, in order to designate it as visitor parking, I think you're going to have to have signage of some kind. Probably painted on the ground is my guess, something along those lines.
But it's not intuitive, so why wouldn't you mark a couple closer to the entrances of visitor spots?
Well, we can talk, we can talk about that.
Alright, anything else? Any other questions? Alright, let's pass this on to Peter.
Steve, can you bring up the drawings?
Yeah, Chris, if you don't mind making me host, I'll I'll pull them up.
Elliot might have to do that since I think he's the host still, or no, Chris is.
Chris is the host now.
So what we've done now is we've gone through and updated the building footprint at each level, making sure that the units interior and exterior now are working together, which they are. Showing areas on the second floor that are bumping out, showing areas on the first floor that are holding steady in the footprint. Something that Jim thought last time was we had somehow forgot to build the building in in the back where the three unit, where the three bedroom apartments unit were, and they we took those back to to that area. So we made that correction, both in the floor plans, elevations and in the rendering. That that was a miss there that had carried up from the floor below, so we took that back the way it should have been. So here we're seeing the updated architecturals. Trying to show the gables in the center, except on the front, here's the left elevation, right down towards the rear. The right elevation, finally, the rear elevation. The gable in the center, and now I think what we've all kind of been waiting for, which is the which is the renderings. So Steve, I'll let you talk about the renderings because you you spent a lot of time with this, your drawing.
Yeah, yeah, so Elliot and I have been going back and forth. He actually sent me a list of the tree implant species, so just starting to get those into the rendering. A little bit updating to do after this meeting, just getting stuff up to speed, but Tom and Jim near point of the amenity space being blocked off, you can see that the way that Elliot designed it, that the green space starts to block that area off, especially from the street side. So starting to give that privacy without putting a fence around. So this is looking down North Ave, here's the lake view on the left side, looking down toward North Ave, Knights of Columbus beyond. Starting to look at the building straight on, you know, how the building starts to sit up with the walkway coming through. Here's the entrance in the front here coming through the building. You can start to see how the massing of the building starts to break down with those gables coming forward. And then the last rendering is the opposite side, looking the other way down North Ave, starting to see the other two buildings, how it starts to correlate in terms of scale and size. We thought one option that's been similar to what we've shown before is having the the bump outs start to be a yellow vertical siding. Navajo beige is actually the James Hardy products, so starting to put a product in a color together. And then keeping a light gray siding that starts to wrap around the side, which starts to become a pearl gray, I believe is the product. And then alternative, what we started to look at in the last meeting was, you know, if we start to go with a more neutral tone, the bump outs start to be a vertical white siding, gray siding starts to be a little bit darker. I know we were toying with those two color schemes a little bit, so you're showing both of those in the 3D world.
Even though the architecture is quite a bit different than the butters, then the newer buildings up the street. It becomes it it starts to harmonize with one another and I think we don't want this building to harmonize necessarily with the others, at least my opinion is. And and picking up the yellow, which is quite frequent in in different levels of tone within the neighborhood on the other side of the street here. Just makes it more different. I think, you know, the the gables and the like certainly mimic the neighborhood. But they also, at the same time, raise the height of the building, so when you look at this perspective, you sort of say, hmm. Looks like the buildings are pretty high. On the other hand, you know, it's it's certainly broken up enough, basically to break this into smaller elements, so. I like it. I still prefer the yellow, quite frankly, but I think, as I said last time, we have to, we probably want to go to the board. I know the client doesn't put is not in favor of the yellow. But I think we need to sort of present the board as an option A and an option B, which is similar to what we did on Crescent Street. And let them let them basically have their input to this whole thing. This gives us a very good perspective on things, quite frankly. Do we still have, because this is, do we still have, I guess, the face on elevations, basically, they they they're up to date, right, as as the ones we presented last time?
I believe that the the flat rendering was, we tried to have this one just in here, sort of as close to the front as we could, just to get the the 3D perspective and then just starting to show just the elevation changes and stuff. So we can get those updated, but we tried to at least bring that that view to a 3D world just to show it.
Yeah, I just, I I I I think that, you know, with the trees and everything else going on in what we asked here, it certainly gives you a better perspective on it on how this thing will look. I think that by stripping the trees away, which was in the previous rendering, it also gives you a a better idea as to where the color tones are. Because it's not distracted by the trees at the moment, so I would suggest that we still have those available for Wednesday as well.
Yep, that's not a problem.
So I think it's, Jim, are you saying to go back into the, I think is what he's asking, take the CAD and put color on?
Well, i- i- if if, well, you already had the colored renderings basically straight on. I think it was on, it was on two sides, basically, down this this front on and then the the side from the KFC, basically, so. If they haven't changed that much, then I would suggest you just bring them out and say this is the color ideas that we were working with. And I think there was, I think there was a gray tone in that one too that was presented, basically, so it would give i- i- and it just a color discussion, it would give a clearer indication as to how how this was, how the colors were intended to be used.
Gotcha.
And then, then, of course, the street level, which you've got here, yeah, those things, so if we haven't, if we haven't changed that much. And I think we have only in, I think, the the gable ends at the entry. I think you've gone to all shingles now.
Yes, we we've gone to, I think, some of the comments you guys made last time were when we had a window and no siding here, that it started to feel like a four story. So carry the siding up, just kind of match it with the yellow down below. Then a lot of research with like, I think we were referring to the color as colonial yellow, a lot of them had this, you know, circle vent up there. I think it just reads a little bit softer that it's, you know, less of a story and more of just the roof line up there. And then I think the only other change was this bay window stopped at the second story and then we had a connector roof beyond that. When we started to actually work out the roof lines and make sure that they were working, it made more sense to bring this bay window up and kind of let that be the connector piece. I think that's really the only change from last time.
So I so I guess you could, you know, that's a progressive that flat on basically is just a progressive, basically, that might bring people in the into the story. And then you show them the story, which this is the story. This is what with the landscape and everything else, this is what we're approaching. So. I don't know, Tom, your thoughts?
No, I I agree and I I'm a little bit agnostic on the the color, you know, so I'll let the architectural people.
You don't want to stick your neck out?
I'm not, that's not my strong point, picking color. I don't even do it in my own house, why would I do it on someone else?
Maybe you ought to show it to your wife first. Alright. Anything else you guys want to show?
I think we're good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's that? What's the little light over the window here on the far right?
This year.
Yeah.
Yes, we we were trying to find more traditional light fixtures that could help to illuminate the outside. So we found a couple of products, one that Chris and the team had worked out finding for the parking lots, kind of had the gooseneck feel to it, so we tried to carry strategic points where we had a little bit of space in between windows just to light the building up.
Well, that's going to be an interesting conversation, quite frankly.
Yeah. Always is.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I guess that that's probably about it. Even though I was late, we might even be on time, how's that? So, alright, so Jesse, I expect there'll be a package coming to us tomorrow to the board through Gale.
Yep, we'll we'll get it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, if if you could send me what was presented today, just for my record, so I have it on file, basically. And thank you, thank you for the other piece you sent me a little bit ago. So I guess with that, unless anybody else has got any presentation, it sounds like we're in a position basically to make a fairly decent presentation to the board on Wednesday of next week. So with that, with that, I'm going to close this meeting at eleven fifty nine. It's a sub-meeting of the zoning board on five ninety six North Avenue. And I thank you all for participating and putting up with my tardiness. And maybe my computer will come back someday. Alright, see you all.